There we go. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, April 23, 2014. It is 7:04 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Joseph Otidy.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Okay, I believe we have some students waiting in the wings from Susan B. Anthony's school to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
So you can have a seat and then in just a minute we'll call you back up for a special presentation.
I was just gonna say, can we just sit down here?
Sure, that works well.
But I'm not gonna do that.
So we do have certificates to thank all of the children who came tonight and I'm going to give them to our school to hand out.
Oh, alright, because it's a lot. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Okay, and we have a public hearing for the 2014-15 AFT contract proposal. I believe this is to receive public input on the initial contract proposal reopeners by AFT Local 3267 for 2014-15, and I do have a speaker card. Ms. McKay?
Is this a public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
Did you open it?
Oh, that's right. I opened, the time at which we opened was 7:06 PM. You may speak now.
Make your way.
This was, this was what you wished to speak to, correct?
How about, yeah.
Please do not step on our students.
Just like the classroom when they're on the rug.
Exactly. Okay, I'll try and keep this two minutes. Greetings, JESD School Board, administrators, colleagues, and community members. My name is Kathy McKay. I teach third grade at Daniel Webster Elementary School. I'm a member of AFT 3267, a JSD Healthcare Committee member, and part of the negotiations team. I want to thank the district office and the board for its recognition that salaries and health benefits are important ingredients to retaining teachers and are a high-quality component of paramount importance for long-term loyal employees. I realize that negotiations are still in progress, but I want to acknowledge the efforts set forth by the district, especially after many financially anemic years. That said, I want to elaborate on feelings that still rear their ugly heads. For me, it is still traumatic to contemplate health benefits every year. Emotions range from sadness, anger, fear, to downright anxiety. It is exhausting to be distraught with worry about health benefits every year for my family. Some days, it takes every bone in my body to focus on my precious and demanding job. I wanted you to know about these feelings, and although temporary, they are the cause of many sleepless nights and sometimes the first thought upon waking. It is awful, and I look forward to working toward a solution that is fair and sustainable for all stakeholders. The last few years, even though I paid quite a bit out-of-pocket costs, I always breathed a sigh of relief knowing that I didn't have to pay more than I already was the previous year. So once again, I appreciate your differentiation of staff needs and your commitment to look for solutions to this ever-present albatross known as healthcare benefits. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. McKay. We also have a speaker card from Ms. Melinda Dart.
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I too just wish to make a comment regarding the proposal. I'm really appreciative of the public having voted for Proposition 30 and to see the new local control formula funding monies coming into the district. And under the excellent direction of Ms. McCulick, the district has made all those meetings public for parents to be part of the process, the process called the LCAP, to help bring back programs and much-needed positions to our district, and I'm very appreciative of that. But I do have to stress that as part of the process, we are aiming in our district to retain and attract excellent teachers, and we have, of course, had that goal all along, but it's now part of our official plan. And I do know that there's competition in that area, in the districts around us, and that many districts are also doing the same thing, bringing back programs. So I would urge the district and the board to really, really consider seriously putting as much as possible towards, for teachers so that they're not, and for all employees of our district, so that any gains are not evaporated away into the escalating healthcare costs, so that we can really reach the heights that we hope to reach here. That is, to have expert delivery of rigorous curriculum under the new Common Core standards, and as we have attrition and retiring, that we can bring in new teachers who will be able to stay here and have families and make a career in our district and have their training with us and then remain. So I think that while it's not always seen as the first thing on anyone's list, I do think it's to the whole community's benefit that we make sure that our salaries creep up from where they've been languishing near the bottom of comparable districts and that we bring them up as we did last year, but once is not enough, and we really need to make sure that we can, that we can be attractive to the newest and brightest teachers as some of us begin to turn over. Thank you.
I sincerely hope that was not a warning.
Not immediate.
Good. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this topic? Okay, then the public hearing is closed at 7:12 PM. And we open a public hearing on the 2014-15 Jefferson Elementary School District counterproposal to AFT Local 3267. So at 7:12 PM, we will open the public hearing on the counterproposal. Are there any speaker cards to this topic? Well, then at 7:13 PM, we will close that public hearing. And thank you again to both of you for speaking to that issue. I know it's big, important, and near and dear to everybody's hearts. Okay, great. That brings us to our special presentations, and we have a presentation for, from the Susan B. Anthony Silver Wolf Basketball Team. Ms. Gardner Burke, would you like to come?
Try not to look at those cameras. I was watching you. So the real presentation will come from who you want to hear from and not so much from me, but I just wanted to share with you that my name is Gay Gardner Burke and I'm the principal at Susan B. Anthony, and these are my fifth grade, some of my fifth grade basketball players. We had three fifth grade teams, a girls' team and two boys' teams this year. Two of the teams got real close to the championships. We have 11 teams at Susan B. Anthony altogether, so from third, fourth, and fifth grade. We have an excellent program, and I'm very proud of my students as a whole, but my teams, and I thought it would be nice if my fifth graders could represent. I feel like they were really successful this year because they utilized their life skills of perseverance, cooperation, courage, and respect. We're also successful as a school and as teams because of the support of our parents. They come to our games, which are a lot, and they seem to just keep coming. They get their kids to the practices. They support the teams. Many of our parents are coaches, which means that they're coaching the children after school, on the weekends, and going to the games. The parents purchase these wonderful jerseys. They get snacks and waters. At some of the games, they have little howls that they do. Last year, we had a parent who had their youngest daughter wear roller skates and a sign saying, "Go Silver Wolves," and at every break, she'd roll up and down in front of the stands, get everybody to cheer and howl. So that's dedication. We also have dedicated teachers who make our program successful, too, and that's Mr. Felix. Wave, please, Mr. Felix. So I feel like one of the reasons why I have such a lovely school is because I have a lot of teachers like Mr. Felix. Mr. Felix takes his, the third graders camping every year to San Bruno Mountains. He organizes 11 basketball teams, helps to, no, gets the coaches, bribes them. I'm not sure how you do it. But he does. He's a highly qualified teacher, and he's dedicated to these students and to our school. And I'm really proud of him and the spirit that he brings to our campus. It's the over and above that so many of our teachers do in this district and in my school in particular. Good programs and good schools are made up of motivated parents, great teachers, and really wonderful students. So now I would like our fifth graders to share with you what life skills they believe they use when they play basketball and how it helps them to learn, because I know you don't want to hear from me any longer. So we're gonna start right down there with Elena, and then we'll just go and speak in a good voice, be very proud, make sure they can hear you, and I'm all done. Are you ready, Elena? Okay, let's go.
Good evening. My name is Elena Gonzalez, and at the basketball, I use the life skill of cooperation, because basketball requires a team to work hard. Basketball also helps me with my learning because sometimes we work together on projects and we can not make that happen without the life skill of cooperation. Thank you. Hi, my name is-
Hey, good.
It's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna get on the microphone, TV. Yeah, thank you. She should repeat.
Hi, my name is Pamela Jane. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because I try my best. Basketball helps me with my learning because I cooperate with my peers at school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elaine Costa. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because when I go out on the court, I play with my best effort. It helps me with my learning because I work with my best effort.
Hello, my name is Rebecca. When I play basketball, I use the life skill perseverance because when I play basketball, I always keep trying even though when we're losing. Basketball helps me with my learning because it shows me how to work as a team like I do with my classmates. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of good sportsmanship because even if we lose, we have to learn not to be mad at the other team and yourself. Basketball helps me with my learning because I learned how to work like a team.
Hi, my name is Tatiana. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because after each and every game, I will always try my best, no matter what happens. Basketball helps me with my learning because it shows me how to work with all my basketball pairs.
Hi, my name is Jovan Thompson. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of courage because when we lose, I just say that we can do better the next time. Basketball helps me with my learning because if I don't do, if I don't get good grades, then I will get kicked off the team. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vince. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because I need to work hard in training. Basketball helps me with my learning because it teaches me not to give up until I reach my goal.
Hi, my name is Daniel Fortaliza. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because I always try my best. Basketball helps me with my learning because when I play, I get better and better.
Hi, my name is Simon Gomez. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of effort because as, as a center, you can't give up on a ball when you get the rebound. Basketball helps me with my learning because it gives me a break on school and, and, yeah, it just gives me a break. I'm not thinking, not thinking too hard.
Hi, my name is Nate. When I play basketball, I learn the life skill of teamwork because the key of playing basketball is always play, keeping up with your team.
When I play basketball, it helps me with my learning because when, you need to pay attention in basketball and in school.
My name is Sammy Zarati. I use the life skill of perseverance when playing basketball because although sometimes we are up against tough teams to beat, Silver Wolves never give up. This has taught me to apply this at school with my studies. There are times when things get hard, but just like in basketball, I know that if I try hard enough, my perseverance will help me overcome any obstacle on the court and in the classroom. I know I need to work hard to play hard, and I do.
Hi, my name is Nicholas. When I play basketball, I use the life skill of perseverance because I'm a good player and I never give up with my teammates on the court and off the court. Basketball helps me with my learning because it makes me a better classmate with my teammates on and off the court and especially in the classroom.
Would, you who went first, would you like to read it again so it can be heard on the tape and for people listening? Can you read it into the microphone? We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elena Gonzalez, and when I play basketball, I use the life skill of cooperation because basketball requires a team to work together. Basketball also helps me with my learning because sometimes we work together on projects and we can, cannot make that happen without the life skill of cooperation. Thank you.
All right. Has everybody had a chance now? All right, bravo. Anything to say to these fine young athletes?
You knew I was gonna have something to say.
That's why I turned to you first.
First of all, everything everybody said was the reason I believe that sports are very important to have in the schools. Everybody. Another thing that nobody said, but you guys got up here and you spoke. I think it's in the top three. The biggest fear is public speaking. You all did that, so basketball's also done that for you. Everybody said something wonderful, but, um, young man right here, what's your name?
Vince.
I'm sorry?
Vince.
Vince, you said something that really stuck out, and I don't want you to ever forget it or anybody else in here. You don't give up on your goal. You keep going. Don't wish it was easier, wish you were better. Good job. Keep it up.
Well, congratulations to all of you, and all of those life skills that you mentioned are also skills that we're required to have as board members. So hopefully, we all learned something tonight, too, about cooperation and teamwork. And one of you mentioned sportsmanship, so that's something that we're supposed to have up here as well. It's called boardsmanship. All knowledge is transferable, and I like the fact that you've transferred your knowledge that you gained in physical education over to your academics as well.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming tonight and to say congratulations. You guys are great. Everything that you said was wonderful, and I know one of the students did mention something about being good sports in case you lose a game. That's really important because that shows that you care about each other and about the game, and the fact that it's not about winning, it's about playing. It's about being together as a team, and that goes on the rest of your life. You're not always gonna be the one that wins the top prize, but you'll be right in there with all the great people, and that's what's important. So take the skills you learn, and we thank your principal. She's done a great job enforcing those skills. I know when I visit the school, it's written on the, hanging on a sign, so I saw it myself there many times. And so what is nice about it is you'll use these techniques all through your life. Whatever you do as you grow up, you'll remember these skills. Keep it up. You're wonderful. I want to see you guys again. Maybe I get an invitation to a basketball game and go see you play, but keep it up to every grade that you're at. Let it be your goal to be the best you can be, and keep your smiles. All of you are great.
One more thing, I forgot. Our recycled art gallery is Friday all day.
Oh, great.
We have the, we have an art gallery that they've all done, the art with recycled art. It's fantastic. We have a tour guide in the front office. Just come over to the school on Friday and check it out. Right, guys?
Yes!
All right.
And I was there last year. I saw it. Yep, it's great.
And I'm really impressed with what all of you say about what you're doing, and I also want to say to you and to your parents behind you that one of the best predictors for people being fit and active as they move out of childhood into adulthood and middle age and even beyond is having been active and involved particularly in sports, in junior high, high school, even grade school. That wasn't an option when I was a kid, but, and so this is a great foundation, not just for the academics and for the sportsmanship, but for a lifetime of being fit and healthy, and we all know how important that is. And so, you know, you can do that, and then when you're my age, you can still be out doing active things and having a great time with it. So keep it up. It sounds like you all know that you're getting a lot of great stuff from it, and I hope having a ton of fun playing basketball as well. And I want to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight and all of the parents for bringing them and making the program happen, as well as the teachers and of course, Ms. Gardner Burke. Senior moment there. See, you can be so old you can't remember names and still be active if you get a good start.
I had one last sentence to say before I kind of got interrupted was, although you're having a great time in sports, the number one thing in your future and in your life is your studies. Okay? So be sure you do all your studies and also do your sports. Okay?
And you know, one of them pointed, brought out that connection because one of the things is, and if that's what it takes, that's what it takes, the motivation. I'm gonna study hard because otherwise I can't play the sports.
Yep.
And down the line, you reap the benefit of having studied hard, even if your motivation was just to play sports. So again, congratulations to all of you and thank you very much for coming. And if you're willing to stick around for a few minutes, everybody, our next item is another special event. It would be nice to not have everybody get up and walk out before we acknowledge the winners of our district spelling bee. So if you kids maybe can go ahead and have a seat or, yeah, go back over there.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Deana Doos, vice principal at Ben Franklin.
I'm Deana Doos, Vice Principal at Ben Franklin School, and it's been my honor to coordinate the spelling bee this year. It was a pleasure to have a co-coordinator this year, and I'll be introducing him in just a moment, David Petunari, who's an administrative intern here in our district. I wanted to take a moment to thank our district and our board for again supporting this wonderful activity. There's a buzz of excitement the afternoon and the evening of the bee. We had 12 fantastic volunteers representing classified, certificated administration, all walks of, um, all walks of our, and board all walks of our district. And I'd like to personally thank Dr. Douglas and Ms. McCulick for again serving as volunteers at our spelling bee in March. So thank you. Thank you all. It gives me great pleasure and it'll be his honor for Mr. Petunari to come on up and introduce our grade level winners and our district winner for, for the 2014 spelling bee. Mr. Petunari?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce our district level and grade level winners of the spelling bee. And just have to take my glasses off so I can read. Representing the fourth grade from Thomas Edison, Mustafa Abuzaria. And representing the fifth grade from FDR, Kaitlyn Manaus. Representing the sixth grade from Daniel Webster, Humberto Rivas. Representing the eighth grade from Ben Franklin, Hr To. And representing the seventh grade from Fernando Rivera and our district winner, Nor Ubazaria. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to work with them, and thank you to all our volunteers and all the teachers at the schools who help coordinate the school-wide spelling bees. And a very special thanks to Ms. Deana Doos who coordinated, and we had a great time. So thank you very much.
And I'm gonna ask all of you kids to stay right there for a minute, and we have some certificates.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, whatever. Yes, you can ask questions before we give you the certificates.
I didn't make it this year, so I'm curious. So what was the winning word? Do you remember?
Indigenous.
Indigenous? Can you spell it now?
Uh, indigenous, I-N-D-I-G.
Great word.
So we also have a gift from the Daily City Colma Rotary Club for each of the winners. So Ms. Hopkins and I, as members of that club, will distribute that gift to the students as their names are called.
Okay. And this certificate achievement in the spelling bee is Mustafa. And this is for Kaitlyn. I had the pleasure of doing the judging for Kaitlyn. And you have a certificate for Humberto.
Once again, thank you very much.
And again, thanks to all of you. And I do want to acknowledge, putting this on is not a small event and coordinating all those volunteers and things, and I, and I know you've been doing it for a while now, Ms. Doos, and I want to say I really appreciate you doing that. And that some of the words some of those kids spelled are ones that if you put me up there on the spot to spell them, I would probably just like not even open my mouth. So it's, it's always impressive to listen to them. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next section of our agenda, communications. This is our opportunity for comment. Looks like some people want to go home and finish their homework, so we'll give you just a moment. Although it would be probably great if some of you are willing to stick around until after these, since this is also when we do make announcements, which are sometimes good to hear. But, oh, well. Okay, comments from, comments from administrators?
Well, I'll speak up now that all the kids have gone. I just think it's really wonderful that they're associating the life skills with the sport and how it's helping, how the sport is helping them in their education, and it's thought-provoking to them, and so it really kind of brings more education into the physical education part as well.
So we also had another event since our last board meeting, literacy and family health and literacy day, and had a great turnout. It was over a thousand people again, and that was not including volunteers, from what I understand. And I just want to thank our coordinator, Jessica Pace, our English Language Arts Program Director, and Pat Bohm, who coordinated that together and all the countless volunteers. I know Melinda Dart was there and many teachers. It was a great event. And then also, right now, we're currently field testing the new assessment system, the Smarter Balance. So far, there are technical glitches, but it's not on our end, which is nice. It's on the, the Smarter Balance end, but it seems to be rather smooth. But not every school has started, but we're, you know, we're in the process and we're just testing the test, so, uh, you know, it's, it's an interesting process and we'll see how it goes.
Has there been any feedback from the students?
Not yet. I've heard feedback from teachers, and I've been in constant contact with the Smarter Balance folks, but I've memorized their phone number. But we have a survey that we're hoping students will complete that is put on by the county so we can see what the glitches are, what we need to think about for next year when it's live and real.
All right.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Hopkins?
I just also really wanted to appreciate all the people behind the literacy day. It was another wonderful event, and being at SBA, you know, another congratulations to SBA for hosting something and to Pat Bohm from Daily City Partnership and Jessica Pace.
Okay. Board member acknowledgements and commendations. Anything you wish to call attention to? Oh, okay. Mr. Ali?
Nope.
Ms. Bruswella?
I attended the literacy day, which was really great. It was well-packed, and also the evening before, packing the lunches for everybody, which was lots of fun. And we had a PAC meeting, and we also, I attended PTA council meetings, so there was quite a bit of little, little meetings going on here and there. Other than that, nothing else to really announce, other we, there are a lot of upcoming events happening, which we are probably all gonna get invitations to, so look for them, and this is coming towards the end.
The busy season.
Yeah. It's like it just creeps up and it's busy as can be.
March madness for basketball players and May madness for school people.
Exactly, exactly. But we do have coming up the, you probably all got the invitations, the Kent Awards, which will be really exciting.
Yes. Very exciting that yet again, we have, we have programs that are being acknowledged. Yes. I want to give a shout out to the students at Tobias who had a read-a-thon all last month, and I meant to get figures for how many hours or minutes they, they read because they honored kids at each grade level for having read, you know, even the little, little ones, 500 minutes in the, in the month and up to something like 5,000 minutes for the sixth graders, and amazing number of the students did it. They had people coming in and reading to the classes, you know, so just they spent, put a lot of energy into making it an exciting thing, and the kids really responded. They, they clearly were, were reading like crazy, and on last, on Friday, they did their ceremony, they handed out the T-shirts, and I was at work at the Westlake Library after school let out, and I saw quite a few kids coming in proudly wearing their "I read 1,500 minutes" T-shirts or whatever. So clearly, they were into it and excited, and kudos to Tobias for making it a, a fun and exciting thing to sit down with a book.
Well, the other thing I think that Tobias did was really nice was the, was that, the Cancer Society thing, Relay for Life.
Oh, that's true, yes.
They had, you can explain it because it's your school. But what was it called?
Relay recess.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, yes.
And I think they raised something like $8,000, isn't it?
I hadn't heard a figure.
Yeah, something like $8,000, and it's really something that the families and the children got together for such a great cause.
Yeah.
You know?
No, it's great, and that's, that's a, a wonderful thing that Tobias does. And I will just give another shout out. If you go to the district website, the whole district also has a team separate from the Tobias team, and anybody can make a donation or join that team, and that does not mean you have to come and walk for 24 hours. It just means that you make a donation. So I don't want anybody to think, well, I'm not coming to, to walk that whole time, so I can't do, help out, but, you know, we can help our district with all of us being involved in a battle that I think is not, again, something that's not left any of us untouched. Are there persons wishing to address the board? No? Okay. Well, then, Mr. Vidalis, do we have correspondence and comments?
Yes. One that serves both. So this week, and I, and I thought it appropriate just to mention because it is on the consent agenda later on, but state superintendent of schools chief, Tom Torleksen, released his education technology blueprint. And I just sort of wanted to highlight what some of the aspects of it are because it very closely mirrors what you guys heard at the last board meeting and that you'll be approving the budget for later on today. So some of the things that he highlighted that are important is that students and teachers have access to internet-connected devices, that classroom technology should be integrated throughout California's K-12 system and throughout the curriculum. It's not separate, not a separate class. That there be professional development and technology instruction, that the schools or districts should identify technology gaps and establish the professional development for programs that, that need to be occurring, that there be staff positions that are available to assist with education technology integration to help lead during this transition time and implementation period, and that we use our Common Core implementation block grant money to help support some of these goals. And so it was sort of interesting because I think I got it on, actually a week, Friday, a week ago, and I thought, oh, this is exactly what we're doing. So we're gonna go ahead and talk about how we're aligned with Mr. Torleksen's, at least the vision of, of his department for how we use the Common Core implementation fund grants, which is up for, the budget is up for your approval later today.
It's good to know we're thinking along the same lines, I guess.
One more place that we are leading the pack.
There you go. That's a much better way of putting it, I think. Okay. Thank you. This brings us to general functions, item one, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Unanimous approval. And item three, the resolution. Hang on a second. He was taking his glasses off to read the stuff. I gotta put mine on. Resolution number 1404 dash 23B, Day of the Teacher. And this is to designate May 6, 2014, as the Day of the Teacher, and I did, I wanted to read it because it's not real long and it's kind of nice to acknowledge them unless somebody else. So the resolution, whereas Jefferson Elementary School District teachers serve preschool through eighth grade students with great distinction, and whereas teachers and other certificated personnel bear for society the responsibility for directing our country's most vital resource, and whereas in large part, the future of our great nation rests on the success to be achieved by our teachers, and whereas teachers serve as exemplary role models for youngsters when they daily demonstrate in the classroom their love for learning and dedication to their mission through their participation in professional and personal improvement programs, and whereas teachers in the Jefferson Elementary School District work collaboratively with the Board of Education, Superintendent, Administrators, and other staff in support of the district's commitment to quality education for youngsters, championing the cause of equal educational opportunity for all students. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Jefferson Elementary School District does hereby acknowledge the contributions of dedicated teachers to the educational success of our students and recognizes May 6, 2014, as Jefferson Elementary School District Day of the Teacher, and urges parents, students, and district residents to publicly show their appreciation for teachers and their contributions that improve our community, our futures, and our daily lives.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1404 23B, Day of the Teacher, designating May the 6th, 2014, as the Day of the Teacher.
I wholeheartedly second.
All right. It is a resolution, so we need a roll call.
Mrs. Bruswella?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye. All right. Well, once again, it's hard to say thank you too much to our teachers, so thank you again.
I'd just like to say I appreciate everything you do in the classroom, you know, on the campus, outside of the campus after hours, all the time it takes to do the job you do. Thank you so much.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Section two, curriculum and instruction. Item one, acceptance of donations.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donations as follows. George Washington, $624 from Lifetouch National School Studies. Thomas Edison, $30 coming from Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Gift Program. And, and Ms. Mc, Michelle? Michelle? Paul Taub?
Taub.
Okay. And also $20 from Wells Fargo's Community Support Campaign, and Michelle again to be used at the, at Thomas Edison School.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we accept those with thanks. That was unanimous again. Okay. And brings us to item four, Designating Local Control Accountability Plan Advisory Committees. Would one of you like to give a brief?
Sure. The, as you know, the local control funding formula is, there is required to have a plan, an accountability plan, the local control accountability plan or the LCAP, and the state is requiring that there are two committees. One has to be the parent involvement advisory committee, and one has to be district English Language Advisory Committee, PAC and DLEC. Those are the two required committees, and we have to publicly affirm that those are the committees that will advise the board on the LCAP. And so those are usually the committees that advise the board anyway, but it has to be publicly affirmed.
How many people are on these committees?
The DLEC, it's, it's supposed to be one parent from every school site.
Oh, all right. And the PAC?
Same.
All right. So we should have quite a bit of people then involved in this.
That's who should be on it. It's how many actually attend.
Right.
But it should be one parent from every school site represented.
Is there, I know it's not required because you said these are the two that are required.